Okay, hereby call to order the October 28th, 2024 meeting of the Town of Hanson Planning Board at 6:00, 6:32 PM. I would also like to announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for a distribution on Whitman-Hanson community access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found at WHCA.TV. First thing on the agenda this evening, we have approval of the September 23rd, 2024 open session public meeting minutes. Anyone have a chance to look at that? Oh, in attendance this evening, we have myself, Kevin Cohen, Don Ellis, Paul Benardato. Absent this evening is Joe Campbell, and John Kemet is on his way.
Why don't you make a motion to pass over the minutes until the next meeting?
Okay, we have a motion to pass over the minutes.
So we?
And second, okay? And I agree to pass over the minutes as well, so 3:02. I'm passing over the minutes to the end of the meeting.
To the end of the meeting or to the next meeting?
End of the meeting or next meeting?
I'm actually meeting.
Okay, so November the 25th would be the next scheduled meeting.
All right, passing over the meeting minutes to the next meeting. So tentatively, November 25th. All right. So we have a public hearing, 6:30, 35. I mean, a read.
No, don't read it yet.
Don't read it yet?
Yeah.
You want to wait until?
Yeah, we're waiting until Mr. Kemet arrives. The reason is, Mr. Ellis is also on the park committee, so he can't sit on both committees. So considering that the park committee is having this presentation for the planning board, technically he has to recuse himself. So he'll have to sit in the audience. That being the case, we would no longer have a quan. It's a five-member board, they need to have three members present for a quan. So we're waiting for Mr. Kemet to arrive. Once he arrives, then we can open up the public hearing. So if you just bear with us.
We can also go on a quarter.
We can...
We have a 7:15.
Well, that's at 7:15, yeah.
We can keep the three minutes.
We've done the minutes. You could take a recess until Mr. Kemet arrives.
Yeah, so...
You can call for a recess.
Yeah, I'll call for recess. Do you need a vote on that?
Uh, I don't know.
All in favor of a recess for until John gets here?
Yes.
Okay. Three recesses. All right, welcome back. The time now being 6:40. We have a public hearing. Can you read the public hearing?
I could read that for you.
Okay, sure. Tony, town planning.
Just bring that up. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81D through 81H, and the Hanson subdivision rules and regulations, the Town of Hanson Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, October 28th, 2024, at 6:35 PM at the Hanson Town Hall in the Select Board Meeting Room located on the lower level, 542 Liberty Street, Hanson, Mass. The purpose of the hearing is to review the application for the proposed public park to be known as "High Street Park," working title, submitted by the applicant being the High Street Park Committee, located at 542 Liberty Street in Hanson. The owners of the property, the Town of Hanson, again, 542 Liberty Street in Hanson. Plans were prepared by Land Planning dated September 26th, 2023. High Street Park consists of approximately 32.1 acres of land located on the eastly side of High Street and is shown on Town of Hanson Assessors Map, 49 Lots 1 and 1A-1. The Planning Board seeks public input relative to this proposed project. The applicants, their representatives, and any other persons desiring to be heard should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. Plans and accompanying documents are on file in the Town Planning Office, second floor, Hanson Town Hall, and can be reviewed by appointment. Hanson Planning Board, Joseph Campbell, Chairman. This was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on Thursday, October 10th, 2024, and Thursday, October 17th, 2024, and 64 abutters were notified along with the surrounding communities. Acting Chair, Mr. Cohen.
And as a point of order, we do have Mr. Kemet in our presence as well. And yeah, we can shove it. And Mr. Ellis is recusing himself. We'll give him a moment.
Maybe two persons at once.
So I don't know if Mr. Ellis wants to make a presentation or a short presentation regarding the park and its history and where we, how we came to this point, and then there's plans on the screen that I can go through once he's completed.
Yeah. He doesn't, may or wouldn't, wasn't expected to do this. Yes. Well, the history on it is that...
Brief history.
Okay, well, it was asked of us by the selectmen to have a committee to relook at the Old County Hospital land. I feel like an idea. I'll turn this way. Back to the office. Was asked to ask the committee to form a committee to do something with the hospital land. To make it kind of quick is the fact that this has been going on for probably five years now.
Eight.
Eight, is it?
And a half.
And we looked at several things. They had to redo the hospital itself, and then they tried to build it down so that we didn't do that. If we looked at affordable housing, we looked at elderly housing, there's no money in the state at that time, and I still don't think there is any to put that type of thing up there. So we looked at a lot, and we looked at similar to a developer, and they looked at it, and they didn't want to for various reasons. I'm not privy to why, but usually they just say, well, we're not interested, you know, they move on. I think probably it's because it's a tough area to cut up there. Also, land has got some clay, heavy depth of clay, so... So anyway, in a short, we decided to do a park, and the selectmen said that would be good, so we moved forward with that. Everything that the committee does is with the blessing of the Select Board. I forgot if I remember to say that correctly. And so the committee was formed, we looked at everything else, like I said, and then we went forward with that. And this is what we came up with and voted on, and at this point, it's been accepted. All of our moves have gone through the selectmen, and they either say yes or no, so they've given us the green light to go forward. And they looked at the plans, and recently, and this is the final plan, and they changed it from the original to this is the final, it was originally the final committee, and then they changed it to the High Street Park Committee because obviously they want a park, and that's what we're having up there.
Ten blocks left.
So this is the heart of the park that's been approved by the selectmen and through the town planner and so on, so this is where we stand to today. We have the area for parking. To have a park, to get grants, we need at least 125 parking spaces to get the most money that you can to be able to develop it. We had a lot of meetings with people at the schools, I think it was a few years ago, and approved that. We've had other people come in to design stuff, you know, who didn't like what they designed, you know, I do remember that, some companies, but so we rejected that and came up and designed the park, what we thought would work the best. So this is what we have now. We have an area for children's playground, tennis courts way up on the left there. On your grants, you have to have ADA compliant, so it all has to be together. Used to be segregated for different areas, but they've changed that. They want everything in the same area so that they don't feel, you know, when handicap is... I don't know what they call it. I don't know by themselves. The teenage years, they figured, the state figures, that it should be something like a basketball court. So the basketball court will be next to it, and then the playground area, and the parking in that area. And so that's pretty much that. Additional parking is down here. There's a, like a bandstand, they call it something else.
Event pavilion.
Is it?
An event pavilion.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, um...
Yep.
Do you want to?
Oh, yeah.
Don, would you like me to present the plans? Would you like me to present the plan?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for being on the album. He's good at this, sunlight. That's what he gets a bit by.
So that folks in the audience can understand, let's say, the orientation of the park. So this is, here's High Street, here is the Bonny House, and the two buildings you see out front here, one is, are the two remaining buildings of the former Plymouth County Hospital. They were known as the nurses' quarters. The back building has, houses the Hanson Food Pantry and the Plymouth County Beekeepers, and the building out front is currently vacant.
Are you ready?
So the way the committee, through their design engineer, determined the layout, down in this area here, you can picture the main entrance to the hospital where you have the stone gate. That'll be an emergency access. So the main entrance will be adjacent to the nurses' quarters. You'll have a roundabout, parking, and adjacent to that parking would be the children's playground and a basketball court. And then to the, call it the south, will be a additional parking that would be used for any other events that may take place. They have proposed a pavilion in an area for, let's say, outdoor shows, and I'm not talking about outdoor concerts or anything like that. This is, if they had anything, it'd probably be like acoustic. And there's an area that designated as a dog park. Now, obviously, this project is a large project, it's an expensive project, and it's more than likely a project that Hanson will phase. So it's the type of project that will take time. So the committee retained the services of land planning. They came up with the design for the parking, the drainage. There's a proposed area here. Just blow this up. Just so everyone can get a good look. So these are the two existing buildings out front. You'll have what we'll call a double-barrel entrance and exit, your basketball court, your children's play area, your parking. Trails that will connect to... Is that part of the base of the trail?
No, no, the base of the trail goes to the perimeter, but these would be a network of trails and walking pathways for park visitors.
There'll be an area here of selectively, what would they call selectively cleared woods. You can picture the old fireplace that's out there, that's standing on its own, that's here. And if you can picture the large Norway spruce, which is in the field, that would be here. Down at the bottom of the hill is where the drainage is proposed. The design engineer has based his drainage on the current regulations. Along the existing homes on High Street, there's proposed planting and screening and fencing to minimize any impacts to those abutters. The planning board did request that the committee, with any, just as any other project, this went out for a peer review. We did receive a review today, so I just received it today, and they reviewed the drainage and some of the parking items. So they've come up with a little bit of a punch list, and it's something that will go to the committee, they'll speak with their design engineer, and have that, those issues addressed before the planning board makes any type of decision. So that's pretty much the project, I'm gonna say, in a nutshell at this point.
Does the board have any questions or comments? Seeing none, anyone from the audience have any questions or comments about the plant?
If I might, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah.
If you just state your name, and just state your name and address if you could, please.
Okay, you, sir.
Mike Owen, Main Street, in Down Falls. As the fire department approves any additional water supply or address any supply issues, because there are no, there are no fire hydrants on Pierce Street.
Yes, sir. Right in the middle of the road, middle of the street, in kind of this new house.
Okay. And there's one also down at the, right at the corner between Robinson and Pierce.
If you can see your names for the record.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. 35 Pierce Ave.
My name's Alice Vera, 159 Pierce Ave.
Okay, thank you. And Don?
Just to answer your question, we did meet with the fire department and went over everything. There's two hydrants right up around the main buildings, which is the biggest problem that could happen, and they need the most equipment to get in there. There's one down by the water tower, and then there's one across the street at the entrance. I haven't signed off on it, so I have a record of it. So the rest of it, they felt that there's nothing in the fields or anything else that would, other than they could take care of it on a regular truck. Both up to them. We went through the police department too, and had them review it, and they were satisfied. The highway department was satisfied, but if we made changes, we might have to review it again.
All right, you, sir.
Paul Cotty, 113 Pierce Ave. Have they made any new lighting up there? Is there going to be a lot of lights planted at night?
No, no. No, at this point. They're not planning on using it at night.
Yeah, okay.
Because of the people up front, it would be the closest people will be infected by it, so at this point, no. We've got ones designed for around the facility, but I think it was the playground and around the buildings and stuff, that are there, the food pantry and so on, but nothing been set up, but down below.
And how about the new parking lot to put in? Is that going to be pressed down again, or is that pavement?
Pavement. All parking lots will be pavement. There is an exit that comes out that goes over into Sun Street here, Pierce Ave. That's for emergency uses only.
Is that the one that's already there?
Yeah.
Is that the driveway that's already there?
Yes. That's for the case they, I don't know, if they decided to have one of those people come in, circus-type thing, the town, and then probably use it to go in and out in that area only, but it's not for regular, regular usage.
Hey, you, man?
Well, I have two questions. One, I'm very excited about this, honestly, and I'm wondering, is there a working timeline? Or is this just still out in the, you know?
All right. Don, go ahead.
Well, the problem is getting the money. We're only in the design process right now, so the next step is to go out and get estimates and stuff like that, and we have to apply through the town planner, grants to see how much money we can get for the project. They don't fund it 100%, so we're gonna have to come up with some money too, so this might not get all done at once. It might come in phases, depending on what we can get for money. Nothing's been said.
And I have a second question, and it's more of a concern. The dog park, it just seems to me that a dog park is something that sounds great, and then there are a lot of liability issues, and I, I mean, I've had a number of friends who took dogs to dog parks, and the dog got attacked, and, you know, so has this all been carefully thought out? And having it right next to the playground, is it...
Not this is away from the playground.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
Is there a line?
Yeah, go ahead.
I can't see the thing till I get my gun ready. Sorry, sorry.
Well, that's, that's all right, but the dog park, usually, all the ones that I've seen, and I've looked at a lot of them, Hunter Quincy and different, you know, cities and towns and Kingston, and there's even one in Avington by the railroad tracks and stuff like that. Then, usually, isn't a problem. I haven't had anybody tell me that, but of course, I haven't knocked on a bunch of doors and asked them, you know, but you bring your dog up there, it's up here, and it's probably signs there that says, use this if you're on responsibility and stuff. But when I've been there and seen dogs, they seem to run and play with each other and so on, and they usually, they have two different areas, one for little dogs, and one for the big dogs, and then some for the elderly dogs or something that don't want a roughhouse, I guess, you know, it just depends. We haven't finalized that, we just put an area for that, and we can move it one way or the other, we can go, there's enough land area to go out into this area, so if we need to move the training area, we can go up into that area. There's an awful lot of land up there that's good, but we don't wanna, you know, pack it up with everything. And this is a big field out there.
What's the grant that was applied for the dog park specific?
Yes. There are grants out there, but most of them, there's people who can take care of the whole thing. They won't, you know, you don't have to put anything up, they'll put the money up, they'll, you know, set it up.
All right, ma'am?
I want to add that some also on the park committee.
Your name, please.
I'm Stephanie Gernhardt, 66, Bonny Hill, Hanson. The dog park is one of the last projects, so we have time to absorb more information and do more research and possibly move it or, you know, get more community input and really clean this out a lot better. So there's, there is, it is one of the last phases, so there'll be time to maybe identify a better location potentially, if it's not going to be in this particular park.
She is a number. Of the committee.
Yeah, just not a three.
Mr. Cohen?
Phil Fleming, 46, Main Street. For the first eight years I was on that committee, and for reasons, I think it was misunderstanding, he was not reappointed this past June. I think they got, because they got a conservation of, but I was on this committee as a member of large. Be that as it may, I'll be applying in case there's any openings to get back on it, but right now, speaking as a member of the public, there's, and people can see, there's many elements to this, and I think the important things that have been said, well, yes, it will cost, likely to be phased, et cetera. There are grant opportunities. I know that the Division of Conservation Services is a source of grants for, for the goal of parks, so P-A-R-C, some sort of acronym, and for that, though, we need to renew the town's open space and recreation plan, which expired this past April. I know the town planner and others are working towards that, but with that eventually back in place and approved, hopefully, we would regain that eligibility for some grants along these lines. And also, as has been said, there is an independent private organization that exists only to fund dog parks, and we are well aware of their purpose and how to contact them.
Probably run by the ruff wilders.
Well, I'm thinking it's not that, it's, you could actually Google it and probably find it, but to me, it seems like enough infrastructure has been proposed here, call it a draft plan, that we felt, we, as if I was still on the committee, it was felt that it's time to formally present with the planning board, so instead of being just a concept, it actually is a project with a life. And going forward, whether outside consultants or engineers or others might tweak it a little bit more, or whether we reexamine the dog park thing, because honestly, in my opinion, that's the, among the lower priorities. There are families in town who have been thirsting for an entire generation to have a playground here, something other than in schools. In the schools, they're not going to go, their middle of school day would be granted. This is for the open, probably dawn to dusk, three or six days a year, whether it's permitted. And the contribution that the Conservation Commission made to what was, in cooperation with the Select Board and the park committee, we did what we call the park perimeter trade scheme, which is, has that park near on the, is out, and that has served, I think, to get people more familiar with the overall property and the potential that it has. So I hope, I hope personally that in my lifetime, this will not only go forward, but actually come to be a real thing, and it's within walking distance, maybe it's passive sidewalking, the tiger, but walking distance of the train station, and that should increase that eligibility for grants. The point is, a lot of thought has gone into it, and it was felt it was time to roll it out now, and just as a member of the public, I'm glad to see it.
One other thing I'd like to mention, as far as the money goes, too, the CPC has some money for us also that we can hold, I believe. I haven't spoken to them recently, but, you know, to help do this, and then if anything that we can get to people to raise some money for the park, for the park too, would help. I spoke to the gentlemen at the school over in Hill or the Bo-Tech, and they're wanting to make benches and picnic areas where the move over them for different areas that people can come out, cookstuffs can have a day there, kids can go to the park, and the open field , frisbees, or whatever else that, you know, people would like to do. So there's a lot to this, and it's taken a long time, really.
I know.
Mr. Chair?
All right, yeah.
Another part of the visioning process has been, going forward, when this becomes more real, perhaps there could be a group form of friends of the Hanson Park, friends of High Street Park. I believe the Whitman Town Park has friends of the Whitman Town. And that could be, could be a mechanism by which both financial donations and volunteer assisting with the management of whatever is needed. It's, it could be a way to facilitate both the park having a good existence and minimizing costs of tap air. So that's among the hopes that we have talked about.
I think there's another question. One more question.
Keith Steen, name for the record. Nick Paul Bellos, 7176 High Street. Being that the dog park is the one element that can't be moved in, as you said, there's space available, why isn't that moved away from residences? I mean, it is really quite close to our backyard and my neighbor's backyard, and we do fear the noise and the smell they do smell. I feel like that's something that, considering all the space that is available, it could be somewhere else easily.
Yeah, we can, we can move it.
Yeah.
That will have to come, that is one of the last things in the park that we'll deal with at this point, you know? The money thing is to determine everything, basically. The park law has to be there because that's the area that they designed it to, you know, to come up with 125 parking spaces and the spaces around it. to come up with a hundred twenty-five parking spaces and spaces around it, other time, I mean, playground area too, so.
Yeah, I don't dispute the parking area. I understand it's a requirement in order to access those funds, but I strongly feel that that dog park could be moved some while else.
We appreciate your comments.
Ed Heel, one sixteen Pine Grove. You mentioned a few times that you might do this in phases. Is the top left area kind of what may be phase one, or do you have an idea what phase one might?
Don, do you have a look at that?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you might...
Yep, go ahead.
Is there a Paul Maddos in the audience tonight? You have Paul Maddos? Okay. This is a gentleman from Allen and Majors. Would you like to speak to the review letter?
You can.
Yeah, that'd be great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Paul Maddos, Allen and Major Associates, we're doing a fair review consultant for the town, the Hanson Planning Board. So we did review on stormwater and also on some site knowledge here, related to parking, driveway, et cetera. So we came up with a few comments here, so the letter details about twenty-five comments altogether. We started off going through the drainage calculations, there's some minor revisions that need to occur to bring the project up in compliance with stormwater handbook. Just minor things. It's not that for the goal. I, you know, I think the project's gonna function as, as it's designed. The stormwater basin in the back just needs to be expanded a little bit to provide the appropriate access. They're supposed to have a run infiltration basin, they're supposed to have a fifteen-foot access road, and it lacks that right now, only has an eight-foot wide berm. So that's gonna be one of the critical things, that extend the infiltration basin to make it a little bit bigger, to comply with regulations. I understand the town, again, EPW is probably gonna be required to maintain the basin. So if they're adequate with providing access to one side of the basin, we will be open to discussions on that, something like that, and that would be fine with us. But again, we know the town is gonna be required to maintain itself. Other things that are required, infiltration basin's supposed to have one foot of freeboard. Right now, it only has about eight inches of freeboard, so we'll have to raise the berms a little bit more to provide that one foot of freeboard, or with the expansion of the basin, make it wider laterally to keep the water down in that one foot of freeboard they're providing. And that's all kind of conditions that need to be provided to accommodate that. As it relates to parking, if you hand down to the panel parking, the town of Hanson's bylaw requires, if you have sixty-degree parking, the driveway is supposed to be eighteen feet wide. Plans currently show only a sixteen-foot wide driveway. So again, either the planning board would have to grant a waiver to allow sixteen-foot wide driveway, or the parking lot would have to be expanded two feet on the other side to get to eighteen feet that's required, per your bylaw. Another thing that we had to comment on was the loading space that's in the back there. You know, they have a forty-three-foot wide loading space there, but they ask two parking spaces directly opposite that loading zone. And I think that may be a conflict when someone parked there in a loading truck there, unloading stuff, that those two cars will not have access to get out of the, those spaces until that loading truck moves. So that's a comment that we have identified to be looked at and to be professionally reviewed, and maybe modified. Bylaw also talks about some plantings that are required for parking areas of fifteen cars or more. I think the plans do not provide you adequate plantings that are required by the bylaw. And then... And I think there's probably some ample opportunity to increase the vegetative buffers, these abutters on High Street. We can move those benches to the other side, and there's not much grading happening there, so we could probably fatten up that natural vegetation buffer to the butters for the, to the wet. So other than that, other than we talked about, you know, the fire department should review the plans and then provide sweat tap and houses, emergency vehicles getting in and out of the site, make sure they're capable of doing that without interfering with the parked cars or curbed lines, something like that. We also ask them to calculate the site distances required at the driveway entrances, to make sure we have adequate stop sign distances. And putting some stop signs at the entrance and exits leaving the site, because right now, there's no stop signs there.
Can I ask a question for Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
If the dog park were to be moved, right, how would that affect stormwater management calculations as, as written at this point? So, I mean, we're gonna, at some point, we're gonna codify this plan, right? So then later on, someone's gonna move the dog park. What's the implications of that to this plan?
It, it all depends on which direction you're going. I believe the watershed line now, if, if dog park is gonna be, actually, it's gonna be on mulch or some kind of grass area, so it's not really gonna affect the watershed too much. It's not like you're putting a new park lot there where if it's pavement, pavement would have a tremendous amount of increase in runoff that you would have to account for. So if they move the dog park to an area that's already cleared, it's not gonna have an effect. If you're clearing more trees to move the dog park, that may have a small effect on your drainage system.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Pam.
Kathy Garnhardt, sixty-six, Bonning Hill. I have a question for you, if this is theoretically. If we had a semi-permeable pavement surface, so some of us on the committee would like to entertain the idea of having a different location for the drainage bed. And someone we had talked to said that the, with so much parking lot and it being impermeable, we had, we were requiring such a large, there was so much drainage from up that, and there might be a way to do this in a more ecologically friendly way, and also a cheaper way where it wouldn't be so far away. Can you give us some thoughts on that?
If you want to decide, design a parking lot instead of being paved, you can do pavers that have voids in it, so the water would infiltrate right into the pavers. But then you need to design a reservoir below it, make sure it can accommodate the so-called one-hundred-year song. So depending on the size of that infiltration here is not, I know the infiltration in the back is, is pretty good. It's like they're using two-point-four inches an hour, so that's relatively a pretty good standing material. But if you have worse material up on this side, maybe that's the reason why you put the drainage system on there. That's where the good stuff goes. And up on this side, the material is gonna be tighter and probably lesser infiltration rate, so your drainage system becomes bigger.
So I'm wondering, my, the thought I have is if we, so there's the cost of materials being greater when you have these specialty materials for permeable paving and maintenance and all that. But the cost of getting piping down there and all of that, that's not cheap either. So if, yeah.
Can I add to that for a second? I think, I know, I know where you're going with this, but the truth of it is, I think, and Dawn and Phil can probably talk to this, is there was a plan for a whole complex down there, and soil analysis was done. And I think a lot of this design and the way that stormwater in the back it is, is related to that, because there's a vein of, what do you call it, clay up in that area. I don't know where it is. I don't know a lot about it, but I do know that that probably could have some effect on the way that that was all designed. So.
Yes. I, I may add to that.
Yep.
So High, High Street runs on what's known as a drumlin. So it's a high, it's a high spot. That's why it's called High Street. And so if you go, as Mr. Kim likes to say, if you win the wayback machine because of the ice age and all that, so as, so now it's left as a drumlin. So everything that was good on the top is down at the bottom. So the top of that in High Street, you're gonna find, I believe, almost D-class soils, which you cannot put infiltration in. So all the good soils are at the bottom, and that's where the, why the detention basin's where it is, because that's where the good soils are. Either on the sides or at the bottom. So that's, and obviously, the natural thing is you're up high, drainage down low. But the soils were best where they have that basin. They'd done, they'd done a lot, and I'm reading through the history, they had done a lot of test pits, and that area had the best soils for the, for the basin itself.
Couldn't it also be true that you don't want water going toward all the residents that are already there? So I think part of the plan is make sure it all goes that way.
Right.
Yeah. Sorry, I have to say, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Don, quick question. What Tony was saying is true. All around the base of High Street, all the way down to the cemetery, is all gravel in the cemetery, and sand all around. I've done, built two or three houses up in that area, and it's sugar stained. It's unbelievable. It washed it over. And it's where, where that is going is the same situation that came down into that area. So you have to go with what you got.
And Mr. Coleman?
From the beginning, I was, I've had a, a lot of questions about the stormwater management. I know the regulations are there, and they're for good reason, and the soils are where they are, thanks to geology and gravity and all that. I, having laid out and overseen the construction of the perimeter trail, I was conflicted between that and the beautiful mature forest, which is down there, and the location for stormwatering. It may be there will have to be compromise between where the trail is now, where it would go in the future. Might have to migrate closer to the toe of the slope or something like that. But I shared Ms. Garnhardt's question, but making sure that we have in a thorough way, rather than jumping to a quick conclusion, explored the possibility for the greenest possible stormwater compliance that we can, with the least disruption to the, to the ecosystems that are there now. I trust that this has been looked at carefully, but I don't know if every other square foot of, of the site, for example, further to the right, as we look at it there, there's a place where, right now, there's a little bit of a hollow. If you move, see, if you go, see the contour lines, just have to go straight up and down towards the left, Tony, right there. I don't know if we looked, saw this there, and it seems to me, just in a general sense, that was a very large stormwater system for the project. And maybe, maybe it is, as Alan and Major said, maybe it has to be that size. I just have not seen numbers, and aesthetically, would hate to lose all those woods. But this is still on paper, so I hope you'll just be open minded as we go forward.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Coleman. So we're looking to close the public hearing?
Nope, continue.
Oh, continue, sorry. Continue the public hearing to tentative, we, November twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-four. All those in favor of continuing it to twenty-twenty-four? So move the rule. Second, if all are favor, three, zero, oh, yeah, three, zero, two. And, okay.
Time, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So what we've done tonight is continued the public hearing to November the twenty-fifth. Our meeting start at six-thirty. Our agendas are posted on the town's website. We'll probably be meeting here. This room is available. So if any of the, if any of the members of the public would like to come, you're welcome to come back. The sign-in sheet, if you've filled it out, if you want to leave an email address, if you're willing to share an email address, we can notify you by email of the meeting as well. So what'll happen now is the review that was done by Allen and Majors will go to the committee, and then they'll have it over to their design engineer, and then they'll need some time to review it. I don't know if they'll have enough time to address all the issues that were raised by the twenty-fifth of November. So they may need a little more time, but that's at least a working date that we'll go with right now.
We appreciate all the comments, and thanks for coming to that portion of our planning board. Moving on, we have a seven o'clock hearing. The town now, seven-twenty. The purpose of the hearing is to review the plans for proposed pedestrian improvements along Main Street from High Street to Elm Street.
I can read the public hearing notes for that, Mr. Chair. You're more than welcome to stay. Anyone's more than welcome to stay for the next hearing, or if you'd like, you know.
And at the point of order, Don has returned.
Thank you.
Okay.
Give me one second, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the public hearing notice. "In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-One, Section Eighty-One C, Eighty-One D, and Eighty-One G through H, and the Hanson subdivision rules and regulations, the Town of Hanson Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, at seven PM, at the Hanson Town Hall in the Select Board Meeting Room located on the lower level, five forty-two Liberty Street, Hanson, Mass. The purpose of the hearing is to review the plans for proposed pedestrian improvements on Main Street from High Street to Elm Street. The Town of Hanson received a grant in twenty-twenty-three for pedestrian improvements along Main Street. The project consists of replacing existent, existing deficient sidewalks and construction of new sidewalks to provide a safe pedestrian corridor along Main Street. The project will construct approximately four thousand linear feet of sidewalk from High Street to Elm Street. The planning board seeks public input relative to this proposed project. The applicants, their representatives, and any other persons desiring to be heard should appear at the place, at, at the time and place designated for the public hearing. Plans and accompanying documents are on file in the town planning office, second floor, Hanson Town Hall, and can be reviewed by appointment. Hanson Planning Board, Joseph Campbell, Chairman. This was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on Thursday, October tenth, twenty-twenty-four, and again on Thursday, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. And forty-seven abutters were notified, and these are the abutters who are directly along this project route. And to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I see we have two representatives from Verdantis here this evening. You can introduce yourself, and I'll turn it over to you to present.
Good evening. Eric Donato with Verdantis. Roy Messing with Verdantis.
Excellent, thank you.
And I will go ahead and kind of walk through. So since the last time we did the conceptual plans, essentially Verdantis personnel conducted a sidewalk to essentially confirm whether or not the original concept plans matched the actual site conditions. As you've noticed, and Tony's aware as well, we did end up cutting out a decent amount of the sidewalk improvements, essentially from zero, zero, station zero plus zero zero to without station five. The rationale behind that is as we walked the, you know, Main Street, not only were there driveway openings, but also there were significant locations of open access to the neighboring facilities and the buildings in the area. So instead of us essentially blocking out and having to reduce down their, their parking, a significant amount of parcels along that southern portion essentially used the entire opening as parking. So that was the rationale for kind of limiting that, as well as, as you move more towards Elm Street, you actually, there's no sidewalk there, so we didn't want to lead a sidewalk to nowhere. So that was one of the rational changes that we did. We also, as requested by the town, changed the conceptual design to be an asphalt walkway with granite curbing. The thought behind that is currently, a lot of the sidewalks that are currently constructed, that will be replaced, they are, you know, currently using asphalt with granite curbing. So we want to be consistent throughout the, the proposed pedestrian improvements. There was also some significant issues related to the access, essentially at, I wanna say that's twenty-six, Station Twenty-Six on the southern side. There is an existing large facility that abuts the, that abuts Main Street, and typically with an ADA compliant sidewalk, you need five feet. We don't have that without interfering into your right-of-way along Main Street. So as opposed to reducing down the width of the travel paths, you've essentially eliminated that portion of the sidewalk. There is existing crosswalks in between. We are adding, looking to add some crosswalks to kind of connect the, the walkways across, as well as we limited, tried to limit the number of sidewalks that would cross, obviously, that main train line, rail line going right through, just as a permitting headache. We don't really want to try to do that. And, yeah, I think for the most part, the next phase would obviously be, once the town kind of approves this, we move through to ninety percent design, and then prepare details and notes and specifications related to the actual construction.
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I do. I don't have my glasses on, so I apologize.
I don't have my glasses on, so I apologize in advance. Is that Phillips Street to the, to the right over there? Like somebody just had a thing on it.
That's High Street.
Yes, that is High Street.
Because one of the things I've noticed on Phillips Street, there's an emerging business there and this parking is limited. So I don't know if that's within the scope of this project.
This is Phillips Street, right here.
So to the right of Phillips Street, there's foliage to protect, I don't know what. It just seems, you know, it's not very pedestrian friendly and it's also not very business friendly for the business that's there because it limits their ability for parking and so forth. So I'm wondering if that's something in that last ten percent, maybe you can consider reconfiguring that a little bit? Because you have to put sidewalks in there anyway, is that true?
Well, so as of right now, so all the hatched areas are the proposed sidewalks. We're actually not proposing any sidewalks there because there's actually an existing sidewalk right along that front portion of the property.
Okay.
And then we're not carrying the sidewalk, similar to what I said before, we're basically proposing the crosswalk so that we can essentially meet the two sides, the northern and southern side of the sidewalks. But then we're not continuing it beyond that. So we can look to maybe better configure the existing sidewalk that's there, but we're not looking to limit any party going to that facility or the building itself.
Okay. Well, you know, I wasn't concerned so much with you limiting it further. I was hoping that we could go in the other direction.
Okay.
Where, you know, maybe the foliage could come out and, you know, I know you can't move the fire hydrant, but I wonder if it would make access into that site to that business a little better. Because, you know, we like to be positive with businesses that are trying to succeed, which they have been struggling a little bit. So I was hoping that maybe we could help them out somehow.
Yeah, what we could do, you know, just because we want to make sure that we're giving access on both sides of the road.
Sure.
What we could do, because right now we're carrying that crosswalk going directly into what will be the front of that parcel. Maybe what we could do is look to relocate it and put it on the other side of Phillips so that we're not, because we don't want to promote crossing if there's no sidewalk on the other side. So if you're to remove that sidewalk, we get to make sure we relocate that cross.
So the problem, as I see it, I don't mean to re-litigate this whole thing, but is that, you know, you've got a development further, I guess, south, right? The two new buildings that are going up. And also on Phillips Street, there's a property up there. And also, you know, the housing authorities looking at developing a small parcel on Phillips Street as well. So I think the foot traffic is going to increase significantly in that area. So, you know, I'm just hoping that we could take another look at that and make sure that, you know, that that's looked at.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Antonio.
Hi, in front of that existing building, the old ocean spray, the one that's, what's the, what's the sidewalk width there now, approximately? You know, is it about, what, three feet-ish?
Eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Probably about three feet.
Really light.
Okay.
Basically, big white curb. It's under three feet, because three feet is the acceptable for, you know, a variance for the, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something, I mean, I mean, I know that, believe it's still up for sale and if there's any development down there on that site, then we can always have the developer improve the sidewalks along that stretch of that frontage.
Question, they have to be ADA compliant, right?
Exactly.
So you've got to have it, what, three feet?
Minimum, thirty minutes, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, okay, and.
On that specific piece of sidewalk, we discussed right now it's concrete. I can tell you experience we had there probably about five or six years ago. I was walking with another person. We were, we had been hired by land planning to do some wetland work out back then. And that section of sidewalk, the side being very narrow, it strangely and inexplicably to me has periodically little ridges, like ribs, that are raised that quote perpendicular to the path of travel, such that the lady walking beside me tripped and fell and broke her nose. Right, and with a bleeding nose went to what used to be a sporting facility, got a little treatment. It's, right now it's not only inadequate, it's hazardous. Yeah, the trip hazards all along, so whatever happens there, can only hope for improvement. I do have a couple of quick questions. It seems like what's being proposed in this area is hatched fairly darkly. It's not clear to me, does it, does this report to show the existing sidewalk on the north side of Main Street? The one that goes in, in front of, I don't know what the street numbers are, just above the one thousand building towards Phillips Street? Isn't there sidewalk there? I'm straining to see the lines showing that on this side here. I see Phillips Street right there, but to the right, which is going to the east. Where is the existing sidewalk? Is that demonstrated on here?
Yes, it's not the hatched portion, so you see the.
It's the gray white section that's not, exists, is that the sidewalk?
Are you speaking to?
I'm speaking to what you're standing in front of. It goes all the way to, across the street.
Along the, yeah, yeah, correct. So this is not, the plan is not to replace that?
Okay, it would be clear if it showed clearly what does exist. But it looks like we're trying to do complete street, which is sidewalks on both sides.
Well, we can.
And my next question, not to take up too much time, further to the west, if you scroll to the left, there's the train station, keep going further, there's the fuel place, et cetera. And then there is an undeveloped portion just before you get to twelve oh two Main Street. It's after the filling station and the house. And can you talk to me about what's proposed? It looks like there's an undeveloped parcel, which I happen to own. There's about a hundred and fifty feet of, of frontage there. It's a wetland and it has a perennial stream going through it that goes straight towards our well field. Going too far to each side of the line. I'm just curious what is being proposed there, including the stormwater piece. Are you designing catch basins into this or is it too soon?
No catch. There's no catch basins.
Somewhere there will be or there already are.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. The funding source, it's my understanding, is strictly for the improvements related to the pedestrian walkways. Can you just go in, what are you, areas talking?
Yeah, you keep going too far to the east. I wanted to go further to the west, between eleven hundred and twelve oh two Main Street. They're going east, go west, they go west again, man. There you go, there's Charles Street coming in from the bottom, directly, yeah. If you hold right there, if you go up, I'm trying to see what the details are there. I can't read it from either side. What does it say about that? What is the characteristics of that section?
So the hatch area is basically we're just putting in a five foot wide asphalt wall.
Okay, and as you said, there'll be granite curb along the way of travel? Okay. And how far up, do they go all the way to Elm Street? This whole plan, is this what we're being told tonight?
There, well, essentially we're stopping.
It doesn't show that.
No, it ends because of all the, what you'll notice is the properties to the north and south have existing curb cuts that they utilize for not only parking but access. So instead of trying to interfere with access to the property owners and the parcels in the area, we've essentially ended the sidewalks.
So it looks like there is a, there's an industrial park there owned by Tracy White that, there's parking at the top there that's parallel to the street. Looks like it stops right across from that, right there, yeah.
Yeah.
And, okay.
We're proposing a couple of handicap ramps on the next intersection with some stripe there.
Okay, even though there's no sidewalk on either side there, it's just pavement?
Well, there's pavement.
The old, the old.
Pavement front of that building parking, yes.
Right, okay.
Could you guys on your next set just designate proposed sidewalk, existing sidewalks in those areas?
Yeah, I already made note of that.
Okay, and any other public, ma'am, from the back?
Charlotte Bassett, twelve twenty-two Main Street. Does this mean we're having sidewalks on both sides of the street?
In portions, we're having sidewalks on both sides of the street, correct.
So what means you will take parking on both sides?
Everything, we're not taking any.
Narrow there.
Yes, it is narrow there, but we are not requesting any property of any of the butters on either the north side or the south side because these are already existing sidewalks that we're replacing for portions. We're gonna, I'm sorry, we're proposing in some sections and we're replacing in others, but we're not interfering with the parcel lines.
So can you, can you, Josh, guys talk real quick about the.
Wait, oh.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out, I don't think they.
I figured, I've, I've been quite down to here, John.
I don't think people fully understand that the layout of the roadway goes ten feet beyond the edge of the road. So maybe if we explain that, they would understand it a little better?
Yes, I'll plan on showing the limits of the right way as a specific line type, maybe like a red line on.
Well, if you could just briefly explain it to the group here, because I don't think they understand that, yeah.
We were always told that we could not have yard sales because the speed is too narrow there. There's no longer pass to total of.
Correct, that's. So the very narrow. The edge of the pavement is not the property line. So the property line goes beyond the edge of the pavement. So from the edge of the pavement, that property line is kind of basically that's going to be like a five foot sidewalk.
Do you have an idea how much?
What is the width of the roadway out?
Yeah.
Width varies, this road width varies.
Yeah, twelve twenty-two, that's your question.
That's my question.
I don't know what that right now, how my head will have to. We have cross sections on the plans that are spaced every two hundred and fifty feet that shows the eastbound and westbound travel lane as well as where we're taking or looking to promote sidewalks. So if there's something specific related to a certain section, a certain parcel, we can, you know, look to include that in the cross sections as well.
Kevin, have another quick question?
Yeah, John.
So is the roadway as it exists, right, already the correct size? Or are the areas where it's too small? So I know you have a, you know, a minimum roadway width, right?
Wait, just so you know, this project, we're not, this is not a roadway reconstruction.
I understand that, yeah. So I guess my point is, you know, if the roadway is large enough, you know, the sidewalk should be brought out a little further.
Into the road.
Into the roadway, yes. So I'm just asking that question because, you know, if people are concerned about, you know, the sidewalk encroaching on their property or anything like that, then if there's sufficient width of the roadway, then we could move it out a little bit. Because I know originally there was talk of, you know, traffic calming strategies for that roadway because it's a very busy area. So, you know, one of the best calming strategies to tighten the road up a little bit and make it more difficult for people to go fast down there and, you know, that might improve things quite a bit.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to throw that in there as a question.
My side of the property, like twelve twenty-two, it slopes down from the road. But the other side of the street, his guy goes up, right up from the road.
About four feet bank, that's when it begins to come right down to the side. My Bill Fortaine, twelve seventy-nine Main Street. Probably at twelve fifty-five Main Street, he's got a bank about that high. It goes right down to the road. And they're gonna, oh, do they, question's simpler. From the white flood line, how far in is the sidewalk? From the white flood line in? How, how much, how far in are they going from the white flood line?
Five feet, right there. Five feet, yes, five feet.
Five feet.
Yep.
Can you state your name for the record, sir? Sir.
Excuse me?
Sir, can you state your name for the record as well?
Huh?
Your name and address for the record.
Oh, Bill Fortaine, twelve twenty-nine Main Street, and I own the property at twelve fifty-five Main Street.
Excellent, thank you. And ma'am, you have a question?
Denise Ledbetter, twelve sixty-three Main Street. I don't have much frontage as it is, and then I have a circle in the driveway. You come in, I'm right on that sidewalk. I've got no frontage left there. Another concern is the snow, snow removal, that's going to end up in my driveway.
And did you say your name for the record?
Denise Ledbetter.
Oh, I'm sorry, and your address?
Twelve sixty-three Main Street.
Did you see that spot?
The property right there?
Right here.
Okay.
It's twelve sixty-three Main Street.
Did, did you guys have a comment to do that on?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're looking for public involvement as much as we can. These are sixty percent design plans, there's still a lot more to be permitted as well as, you know, all the engagement to make sure that we're not taking anything away. The intent of this is to just provide increased pedestrian traffic along Main Street. So whatever info we can take on, whatever discrepancies might, you know, be difficult for certain aspects of your property that you use or certain aspects of your frontage or grade changes. We did show, you know, that there is going to be, you know, a different grade change in certain areas. But again, these are sixty percent design plans. But we'll be continuing to reach out, obviously, with the town to make sure that we can accommodate everyone.
I have a question.
Okay, sir.
Bill Fortaine, twelve thirty. Yeah, if they go in three feet, you're gonna have to move every utility pole on the south side?
We've discussed, so we have the utility poles marked. The idea is that we would have to, basically, there's a requirement of thirty-six inches to be ADA compliant walking by the utility pole. So for the majority of where we're proposing new sidewalks, we have that thirty-six inch wide walkway.
Mr. Hardy? What, did anyone, hey, ma'am, you have a question?
Mary Ryan, twelve ninety-nine Main Street. I just have a question, you're going five feet from the white line?
Not the white, so that's, I think the next phase of permitting will allow for us to really solidify where that is. We are not going anywhere beyond the right of way line, which is town owns. We're basically providing five feet from the edge of the road. It's not the stripe, we're not taking away from the stripe, it's offset from the stripe.
And so, well, five feet in, we could put up our fence along the road, so we'll lose that. Is that what it is?
I think we would work with the town to make sure that we're not going to interfere too much with the public. I think that's very.
Because we had a lot of the wrong with the drainage, because when we were down the path of the hill, so we had our firm put up very high, and then we put the rock in, so it's kind of. So we're gonna lose all that possibly?
I think we would, we would try to accommodate everything that you ask.
And the purpose of the public hearing is to get the community involvement and to hear from Verdantis to work with everyone in town. Uh, Dr. Coleman?
Clearly, there's a lot of interest in the width of the roadway, not only the legal layout, but the travel lanes, et cetera. We see everywhere, and I'm sure state laws are dictating this, more and more attention being paid to bike lanes. I don't know if these are the ones that are responsible for anything except sidewalk planning, but has, is anyone thinking at any level about how bicycles might safely travel through here? Or might be, it might be a difficult zone for those things, given the nature of traffic, the tendency of the speed you see coming down that hill, and all the other factors. Just throwing that out on the table because we're talking about the street. And I know complete streets incorporate not only travel lanes in both directions by vehicles and sidewalks on both sides, but also theoretically bicycle lanes. Might be hard to achieve here, but.
This has nothing to do, by members chair?
Yeah.
This is strictly for sidewalks, that's what this grant was for. Strictly for sidewalk improvements so that people could walk along the street. This has nothing to do with the road. The road itself is actually was milled and overlaid by the state at no cost to the town from Mont Ponset Street all the way out to Franklin Street. So when, there's no change to the road. This is just adding sidewalks to make it safer so that folks are walking along Main Street, they can walk on a sidewalk versus walking in the street. There's no bike lanes, there's none of that. The complete streets is a completely different program and that's something that the town would have to apply for and get. And then that would be in essence a total reconfiguration of the road. That's not what this is. This is just strictly to get some safe passage for folks along Main Street so they don't get hit by a car if they're walking along the street.
And maybe you can, okay, go ahead, ask. Okay, in the back.
Charlotte Bassett, twelve twenty-two Main Street. My side of the road, yes, you could come over five feet from, you know, as the town property is owned. But on the other side, his lawn and my neighbor across the street, if you came over five feet, you'd be in the middle of their lawn, which is probably twenty feet from their house.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. Is there the public comment, they able to submit their comments and write, just so we have?
We can sort of, we, it's being recorded, so we can, yeah.
Okay, so, did you have one, one more comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, over by the cranberry, old cranberry park, whatever that, the cranberry.
Cranberry Building?
Yeah, and you were talking about the problem with the sidewalk. Does the town own any part, like if you were, this is what I was thinking to him. So if you, Kathy, your heart, she says, Bonnie, like, does. So if you, it's Kathy Grandhurst, she's responding, does the town own any of this?
No, no.
No, okay, thank you.
Seeing, seeing no other comment, uh, we're gonna be continuing this.
This can either be continued to the twenty fifth of November or the first meeting in December, which is the ninth of December. I don't know if you need like additional time, or would you like to?
Uh, one, one moment. Uh, what do you guys think?
What date would you prefer?
I know, I want to make sure.
You want to be able to address these comments and update, update set of plans?
So are you looking for the December ninth, the later one?
I think that would be, yes, yes.
Why don't we tentatively go December ninth and then see where you are?
Okay.
Okay, and one, one last comment before we continue.
I wonder that question, do they have any idea at all when this project will be started or finished?
It all comes down to like anything else, funding, so this is the first step. Once we get a design, then Hanson could pursue grants for construction through various different organizations. Yes, sir, it could be a year for now, there's no, there's no scheduling. It's, it's tough to say. This is, again, it's, it's, I've said before, it's step one of a hundred, and we're on step, we'll call it, say, twenty five. To get to that one hundred step, which is actually built in the sidewalks, we still have a ways to go, you know?
So just so people know, like, one of the things that we've talked about in the past, and, you know, if I'm the only one that talked about it, correct me, but the general idea was to be able to come from the train and have people walk down Main Street, right, and get out to the Burridge Pond area. And that's doable because Crook Place is an entrance to Burridge Pond, and once some land sales go through, that'll be complete. And I think the Bay Circuit Trail should be going through there at some point, right?
It starts now, but it will be made more official as we move in those directions.
So, you know, I guess one of, one of my goals, and maybe others as well, is to be able to make it easier, like, you know, you live at twelve hundred on the other side, you could get on a sidewalk, take a walk down the street, and end up at Burridge Pond without getting hit by a car. You know, that's the general idea. I don't know if that makes sense to you guys, but, you know, it would be nice to have a way that someone could, from out of town, could get off the train and walk out to Burridge Pond without getting, you know, hit on the road out there. So I think that's a good goal, I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about that, but, you know.
So, well, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to December ninth, twenty twenty four. Made by Paul, seconded by Don Ellis. Are all in favor of that motion? I think four zero one, Tony?
So, Mr. Chair, so what, what the planning board has done is they've continued the public hearing to December the ninth. Again, if you follow our webpage, we post our agenda. This will, this will give some time now for verdantists to take in the comments that were offered by the public and try and address the comments. If they can address these comments by December the ninth, then they'll let us know and they'll have the hearing on that night. If for some reason they can't, we'll, we'll put a notice out through our webpage, social media. If you, we do have a sign in sheet that's going around. If you put your name, if you have an email address that you're willing to share with us, we'll send you an email directly and let you know what the status of the meeting is.
We appreciate the public comment and verdantists for being here to answer questions.
Yeah, we appreciate the comments, it's what it is.
Yeah.
Helps us to please, uh, teach us, you know.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, to come.
Have your.
Thanks, everyone. Just gonna give everyone a moment here. As always, you guys are welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone that would like, welcome to stay for the meeting.
It was comments that made me feel helpful.
Yeah, I'll get squared away if you have it up. Thank you.
All right, the.
It's unlikely possible to get like a, just one, yeah. Give me just a slight, like rendering, you know, what it looks like from two perspectives. And we draw that up, because I think people are looking at a set of plans like that, understanding what's.
Yeah, I could, I could ask them.
Welcome to stay, if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right, time now being seven fifty one, I have. We have no appointments scheduled for this evening, so we're gonna move on to board business. Board business, the first thing we have here is zoning application review. First one we have in our packet.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Tony?
So the zoning board of appeals is having a meeting on November the nineteenth, and these are three of the applications that have been put before them. The first is for six twenty County Road, map eighty one lot two dash one. Application for a special permit filed under section D one B of the Hanson zoning bylaw by Genevieve Joyce for the operation of a med spa named Rejoice Medical Aesthetics, P L L C, at six twenty County Road. So, the application is not a lot to it, but this is the location at County Road and High Street. There's that building in the, in the middle there. And so they're, they're putting this business in, not sure, they marked it out, in one of these units.
It was the bank.
Yeah.
It was the old bank, it was the Coletta Cutler.
Yeah, so, so, in one of the units. I, it's, it's pretty much, this is interior, the parking is existing, drainage is existing, septic's existing. Anything with septic would be handled by the board of health. Anything as far as the parking, et cetera, it's all, it's all already there. I suppose the zoning board, if they had any type of comments regarding site planner view, they would make that. But it's just something that's, this is all interior work, I think, mostly.
So can I just point out something real quick on this, and I think it's something that they should look at? That's actually a condo, yeah, those two buildings, and there's shared parking between those two buildings. So I just wanted to, they may, may not be aware of that, but that's a condo situation, so, as well as the septic system.
Is the concern, if there's enough parking?
Yeah, that's definitely a concern, because again, you know, the tenant on the other side, or the owner, could say, I don't want people parking on this side, so you could lose a lot of parking. And I know events were held at that, that site, and parking was a challenge then. So I wonder, like, putting a business in there, that's one of the reasons why the bank left, because of the lack of parking.
So if we could, it's, it's.
Coletta Cutler. Yeah, the one on the bottom, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the one on the top is the Hanson Insurance.
Okay, so if we could forward on to the ZBA, a concern for parking, Tony, on that?
Okay, will do.
Okay, any other concern on that?
Okay, let me move on to the next one.
Okay, moving on.
So the second application is application for a special permit filed under section six H B and section eight D of the Hanson zoning bylaw by Caitlin Davies to allow the operation of a children's hair salon at thirteen seventy five Main Street, units one and two, map forty four lot twelve. Uh, one second, Mr. Chair.
So that's just like a configuration of an existing, sort of, building, right?
Yes, this again is, it's an existing building, parking is existing. There's four units, they're gonna take two of the units for this business. My understanding is that this particular applicant, her specialty is basically a hair salon for kids.
So this is next to the hardware store, right? Am I getting that right?
I believe so, yes, on the side of it, yeah.
On the right side. And so while we're on, so there's plenty of parking already.
Yeah, there's parking in the back as well.
Does it, does this, does this include the back portion of the building as well, or is it just front?
Well, it's.
Drive around to the back and it's.
Well, it just says units, units one and two, so.
How many parking spaces are attached to those two units for their use, and is that sufficient? So that's the only question I would add.
Okay, comments, parking, sufficient parking.
Okay, yeah. So what, once again, just making sure that there's enough parking to support.
And again, to the related, to the parking, is there sufficient space for them to back around and drive out of that parking lot rather than back out onto the road? That would be the other. Yeah, you could, you can, yeah.
The old convenience store there, you can tell in and out for use, but there is a number, a limited amount of parking.
Yeah, because, you know, the more businesses you put in there, the more, the less parking you've got, you know, so.
Do you know if the rear continues completely in a circle?
No, it stops like, you can literally see the edge of that parking lot from the Ace Hardware. So, no, it doesn't go around the building and out the other side.
There's no opportunity to make it one way or the other.
It drops off pretty deep, it's deep down there, because those parking spots are actually for the, the space underneath. So there's, there's built, you know, there's units underneath, basically, yeah.
Okay, I think.
And the last application is an application for a special permit filed under section B six F, section eight D, and section seven G one and two of the Hanson zoning bylaw by Caesar DePaolo to construct an eighty by sixty building for the storage of a concrete pump truck and trailer as part of an in-home occupation at zero Franklin Street, map ninety five lot three. One second, let me just, let me just pull up.
How can you call an eighty by somewhat, whatever size is an eighty by seventy garage as a home-based business?
So the, so, so a little background on this, the, this property is their property, their house is in Hanson, uh, sorry, the house is in Whitman. So the house is, they own two pieces of property that abut each other. The house, the front portion, the address, Whitman.
I know where that is.
The back portion is in Hanson. So this applicant had come. Um, I don't think it's by the railroad tracks, it's further up towards.
The ridges corner is, and forks off like that, it's right in that area right there. Like across from the golf course, right?
Yumpies, which one is it?
Uh, well, no, it's actually Whitman. Until you get up the roadways, you can see, like, when you get over the line. Yeah, like, the rail, the houses that are close to the railroad track are in Whitman, right? But then on the other side of the street is Hanson. It's weird the way the line goes.
They call it tri-town.
Yes, exactly.
See if I can, uh.
So for this application, while you're looking at, Tony, um, do, do they have to get ZBA approval from Whitman and Hanson first?
I do not believe so. So what's, so this is the piece right here, I believe, yeah, ninety four three. So this is where their house is, they have, their property goes out to, is in Whitman, and this is the rear portion. So this applicant had come in seeking to construct this garage, and he sat down with myself, the building inspector, in, in the zoning department. And, you know, one question, you know, we really had, was, okay, you're, what this gentleman does for a living is, he's a, he has a, a concrete truck. So that's what he does for a living, and he needs a place to put it. And so he wants to park it here. So one of the concerns we had was, okay, uh, one of the concerns we had was, okay, you have one truck today, and then all of a sudden, there's two trucks tomorrow, and then three trucks, so how do we know that? And he's like, no, I just want to do one truck. So we actually asked him, well, you're willing to modify your garage so that the one bay is gonna fit the truck? Because he has a certain sized truck, and that's the only, that's only, it's only gonna fit in that one bay. And he did, he, he, he's proposing a garage that's gonna have one bay for one truck. And that's it.
So that's sufficiently sized to fit the pump truck, but have two bays of whatever accoutrements he might add.
Exactly, exactly.
Which side of the road?
When you, what do you mean the which?
On Franklin Street.
He would be on the, we'll say, the Hanson side of the road.
Okay, the right side, done?
Yeah.
Oh, so where the jewelry maker is there? It's a turf company now, right?
I, I, I don't know, I don't know.
I'm just trying to get my.
Is that beyond the, uh, assisted living?
Yes, it's right, it's right here, Don, if you look, it's gonna be, so this is Catherine Road.
Catherine?
Yeah, that's the high school.
Ah, okay, that's, I was totally wrong spot.
So high school, Catherine Road, and this is their piece that they own.
Boy, that's gonna be an interesting meeting with all the butters all over there.
Well, one thing that we pointed out to them and we, we asked them is, you know, when they go before the zoning board is that, you know, clearly they take into account the butters and propose some type of screening, fencing, vegetation.
So that's, that's the high school there?
Correct.
I didn't realize it went that far.
What is the, more follow-up?
No, I don't want to, twenty seven, but that's part of Whitman, correct?
Is that his property?
See that parcel?
No.
Eight A?
This is his parcel right here. This is his parcel right here.
Right, so that's in Hanson?
Yes, sir.
The whole road was in Hanson.
Yeah, Catherine, Catherine Road is in Hanson.
Yeah. And boy, when they put the city surge in there, there was some, a lot of pointing fingers and different situations, because it dumps into Whitman's sewer system. That goes through Whitman and Proctor.
Well, they can afford it, they keep taking money from us to the school, so, you know.
So the biggest question I have on this is, because the parcel is long and.
Yes.
Gives enough setbacks?
Yes, yes.
Came up with a bylaw that said that no other towns can connect to their system, that's because of that street, Catherine Road. Because it was that, the guy that owned it was picking Proctor. And that's how we got it.
So this, this applicant, you know, he, he's, he came in to see us, he's, he's willing to modify his building so that, you know, it's like, yeah, he's, he's being straightforward, you know? I mean, it's not to say that a later date in his, in his, if his, if he becomes a multimillionaire concrete guy, I mean, will he expand that building? Maybe, but at that point, he's probably gonna go somewhere else to a commercial industrial site because his business will get that much larger, but for right now, what he's doing, you know, he.
He's entitled to do whatever fits in his zone.
Right, but he actually, he, he adjusted this garage so that it's, he's showing that I'm gonna, I'll do the one bay for the one, so I'm, just so you know, I'm being legit with one truck, you know?
So can I ask you a quick question? Where is the house in relationship to this? I don't think that showed on that.
So the house, because it's not, so the house is here.
The house is out on.
Yeah, the house is out in Whitman.
So that line where it says two A and the end of the road right there, that's Hanson, and just to the left of that, that's Whitman?
Correct.
Okay, so you have to go across to Whitman in order to get Catherine Road?
Correct.
So his house is out in the front there?
Right here.
So how's he gonna get a pump truck past the house with the width of the lot?
Uh, there's, he's got the room.
Oh, he does?
Yeah, he does have the room to get through.
So he's got a roadway that was sufficient?
Yeah, there's a driveway in there.
Okay.
It doesn't look like the same levels, according to that.
No, there's no way.
So what's that lot for?
Yeah, oh, it's up there.
Is that, is that horse farm at lot four?
Lot four, I.
The one you get, you get your thing on it right now.
I don't know.
I'm just curious, because I used to work there, the high school. That's a pretty good sized lot.
Uh, it has an owner, zero Franklin Street, so it does have an owner.
There's a house in front of it in Whitman, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting, I'll have to look at that, because.
I didn't, almost looks like something the town would manage.
Because, you know, you can go around the high school, right?
Well, it's.
There's a little roadway in the corner in that, and you can walk that whole property, there's like little trails in there and stuff. I've actually been in there, I just didn't, I didn't realize it until I saw it. All right, well, I know this has not to do with this, sorry.
It is interesting.
Yeah, uh, okay, so, no comments on that?
Now, I guess, is that finally good?
Well, if you feel comfortable with it, you feel like it's been.
I, you know, it, he's gonna be another business in town, he, he came to us first, he changed his plan, so I think that shows a good. he changed his plan, so I think that shows a good, you know, that he's trying to be a good neighbor, good, and say, you know, and do it right.
Yeah, but he did put in on a buffer on that side, to the.
Yeah, we made that, we made that, you know, clear to him, and, you know, he, when he goes, and again, it was myself, the building inspector, and the zoning, uh, admin, so we all sat down with him and explained, hey, you, you know, need to buffer so that your neighbors, you know.
Exactly.
Yeah, and it's good, you know, trying to be a good neighbor, and they seem to be very willing to cooperate, so.
Yeah.
You know, I thought that was a good thing.
All right, um, moving on to town planner update, uh, housing production plan update is first.
Uh, so I'm working, uh, with our consultant on the housing production plan, and, uh, she will be coming, we're setting it up so that on the ninth of December, which is the first planning board meeting, that, that'll be presented to the planning board, sort of, uh, we'll say go live, and try, and we'll set that up as a, a public hearing type scenario, so that the public obviously can come in, make any, you know, voice concerns, comments, or whatever, any other boards as well. Um, so we're working, I'm working with her on that.
And can you send a letter to the CPC, you know, they're the ones that are funding it?
Yep.
So invite them to that meeting?
Absolutely.
We'll probably have to post for that, cause I depend on how many people show up and stuff.
Yep.
And are they gonna present something at some point to the CPC?
Yes, we can, I can tell her, we can do that, or we can, or we can invite you to our meeting if the, the boards want.
That might work better to just have everybody go to that meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and, um, because I know, um, you know, they'll have a lot of questions. Just see, see, people seem to be, uh, concerned about how much it's costing, and all kinds of things that people are asking, so I think it'd be a good idea to clear the air and down for them.
Okay, yep.
Uh, OCPC, Old Colony, Old Colony Planning Council annual summit?
Yes, so, um, give me one second on that. So, the Old Colony Planning Council, uh, has their yearly summit, which is taking place December fourth, five thirty to eight thirty, at Miraval Ballroom, eight three eight North Bedford Street in East Bridgewater. I know some members usually like to go to this, uh, I have to RSVP by the twenty-sixth of November, so if there's any members that are interested in going, if you can please send me an email, and I'll also contact the chair as well, seeing as how he's not here. Uh, and put how many folks.
It's good for, for us to show some support when you go in there, you know, that's why we've always, we've always gone.
I haven't been to a.
You sent it as an email as well?
It actually is, uh, a convenient place to go, uh, considering how large an Old Colony, uh, Planning Council covers, that we're lucky that it's in, in Hanson, you know, this year at the, in East Bridgewater, um, to be able to make it, it's pretty easy.
Isn't that where the, um, what do you call it, uh, oh my God, um, I'm sorry, I've only.
Oh, like, last year was, uh, last year was, was it last year?
Yeah.
It was in, um.
Say it again?
Remember the martini place that was up there, is that where this is?
No, that's on Route eighteen.
Oh, okay, so I'm in the wrong spot.
This is eight thirty, eight, that, that's, that's Route eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, I think it is the old Mockingbird.
That's the one.
Yeah, I think it is the old Mockingbird.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, they turned into a ballroom, and they don't, they don't serve like, uh, lunch and dinner anymore.
Yeah, um, so, uh, I'll send this to you in an email, let me know if you wanna go, that way I get a head count, um, and, uh, and I can, I'll, I'll respond to that.
Okay, and, uh, we can wait on invoices for the next meeting?
Um, I, I'd, if you don't mind, I mean, as vice chair, you can, you can sign, so.
Happy to, happy to decide, what, what are the?
We have two invoices, uh, one is for sixteen dollars and five cents, and that is for, um.
You know, I'm sorry not to interrupt you, but it was my understanding that, um, Joe Campbell was voted as the person who could sign those, and not the vice chair, so I think we should have an overall vote of that, does that make sense? Just to protect you and the rest of us.
Yeah, I mean, it's mine, I think it was voted as such specifically for Joe Campbell to sign it, and then not as the designated chair of whatever meeting, right?
No, I think it was.
I think it was for the chair.
Yeah, yeah.
To sign, so he's not, he is a vice chair.
Okay, yeah, I just thought.
Is that the only?
There's, there's two invoices. If you're not comfortable signing, we'll move.
I'm, I'm comfortable.
We can vote to.
I think if anyone wanted to vote, that.
I'm just saying, I'm, right, I'm saying, let's all vote this one, because this, this evening, because it's not clear whether you would allow that to anyone else to sign it.
Oh, yeah, fine, yeah.
Would you like to take a vote to authorize Kevin as acting chair this evening to sign the two invoices? Would that be?
Motion by, uh, second by, all, all in favor of that?
Nobody's voting.
All right, okay, and I assume I can vote as well, so, four zero one, in favor of me signing tonight's invoices. Um, and the second invoice was?
So, the first invoice, uh, is gonna be for sixteen dollars and five cents, and what that is for is, um, I ordered the, uh, Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised twelfth edition, so that is in the office.
How much is that?
That was, uh, nine dollars and six cents.
Oh, that's not too.
And then when you tack on taxes, when you tack on taxes, it was sixteen dollars and five cents. Uh, the second, the second invoice is for a hundred and eighty dollars, and what that is for is for the Whitman Hanson Express for the public hearing notices.
So, you can get Robert's Rules for ten bucks, huh?
Would you like me to print next to it as well?
Please.
Yeah.
Is that open sourced on Google, too?
It is.
Google Doc?
Really?
It is.
Cause I tried looking.
Would it?
Yeah, so I figured, you know what, we'll just have, uh, because you, the board will say officially adopted Robert's Rules, so I figured we should have a copy in, in the office.
Should I have it in the desk?
Well, I forgot to bring it down, but I was, I, I am gonna bring it.
There you go. I did forget to bring it. You never know, some of them might have a question.
Exactly, you're exactly right.
ZBA decision four ten would bind.
Yeah, the last, uh, at the last hearing, there'd been an, uh, an ask basically to, results of some of the ZBA, uh, applications that have, that the planning board has sort of taken a look at. So, four ten would bind, which was for a, an application for a special permit under MGL chapter forty-eight in Towne and Hanson zoning bylaw, section B six G and section eight D.
Is that the one you showed us at a previous meeting?
Yes.
Somewhat recently?
Yes, and it was for an in-law apartment.
Yep.
Uh, so, uh, the, ZBA had a hearing date of September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and they voted unanimously to, uh, approve that special and grant that special permit, so I just wanted to give you the, what the results were with that.
So, isn't that the one that, like, uh, there's a question of whether the house was built on someone else's property?
The house doesn't encroach, the, the house doesn't encroach on the town-owned property.
So, how can the ZBA approve something that they don't have the right to?
They did, so.
Doesn't make any sense.
So.
We, we did have a comment for them to review on that stuff.
Hey, you know, how can the ZBA vote to approve something on, uh, town-owned property without the owner's permission? I'm just, just saying, I mean, you, you're the selectman, right? So, let me ask you that question, what are your thoughts?
I'm actually on the ZBA, I think.
Are you? Did you, did you, were you part of that vote?
He was.
Yes.
Yeah?
Um, I went based on what they had suggested that I, you know, but what was the que, I didn't hear the question.
So, my question, my question is, is, um, this project, right, is on, um, partially on town-owned land, so.
Because.
It approved, right, so the, the, the house was built on, encroached on town property, right? So, they're asking to have an addition built, or, you know, expand that site, right?
Yeah.
But they're actually expanding it onto town-owned properties, so the ZBA has actually voted to approve a project that would encroach on town-owned property without the town's permission.
Are they building?
They were, they were going up.
It's built already?
Yeah, but they're going up, but my point is, like, how can you approve something, right, that's actually not on that person's property, it's actually town-owned?
I believe.
I, I think you guys should take another look at this, because.
What is it?
I said, I think you guys should take another look at it, because the reality is, is they've approved a project on a, a piece of town-owned property without the town's permission. I mean, that, that's like a lawsuit waiting to happen, it's ridiculous, actually, but anyway.
Is the addition, why would, I thought the addition was, is it being built, or it was already built?
I believe it's already in place.
It's already built.
I believe it was already.
It's not a.
Yeah, but it's not grandfathered, so the point is, is if you've got a piece of, of, a lot, right?
Yeah.